All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting the order of day here for our June the ninth, two thousand twenty-two board meeting. And before we get started here, I want to do some clarification here on a few things. One thing is, I've been accused of avoiding meetings. And that was back on five twenty-six, I believe. That was the day I had to take my mama to the hospital. And I was in the emergency room. And I was in Tappahannock. You can check with nine-one-one. And also, you can check with Reverend John Vivins. I was lucky enough to see him over there, which I have known him for years and years. So I just wanted to make it clear that I was not avoiding the meeting. Also, another thing, we need to stop these little comments during our meeting from people out here when we do not have a public comment period. So we just need to, need to stop that, which would be greatly appreciated. All right? Now, our first item on our agenda is indication. And Mr. Long, would you be so kind?
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Let us give thanks to Almighty and merciful Father who gave you thanks for this day. We ask that you direct us and guide us that we may make the best decisions for Northumberland County and its citizens. In your name, I give thanks. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Pledge of allegiance. Jackie, Jackie Nunnery, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. It's been awhile.
It's been awhile, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our next item is approval of agenda. Do we have any changes or additions to it? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, one, one item, V. Dot is not going to be able to attend tonight.
All right, V. Dot's not going to be here tonight. All right, any other changes or additions? All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the, with the change?
I move.
All right. Have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. And we have three sets of minutes. We have the May the fourth, the May the twelfth, and the May the eighteenth. Are there any corrections to these minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve them?
I move.
We, second, and that, that's all minutes together.
All the minutes, okay.
All of them.
All right. Have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, the next item is the presentation. We, we do not have V. Dot coming. Next is an update from the county schools. Anyone here tonight like to comment on the county schools?
They're not coming either.
They're, they're not, yeah. We're going to be, I didn't know whether somebody else from there might want to comment. All right, now, next item is the county administrator's report. Mr. Tadlock, I'll turn it over to you now.
All right, thank you. For the month of May, we had a total of seven new structures. Total construction cost for the month is four point nine million. Total construction cost year-to-date is at twenty-five million, which puts us up about three point four million this time last year. Next item I have is I need to reappoint Robert Van Landingham, Wetlands Board District Two, and he is willing to serve again.
All right, motion to approve. Any of us have a second? All right, we have a motion to second. Any other comment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, Mr. Tadlock.
And we still have vacancies for District Two on the Planning Commission Economic Development. We have vacancies for District Four and Five, and we have a vacancy for the Anti-Later Committee, the at-large position. Next item I have is we are wrapping up with the Calio Revitalization Project, and we have several members here with us tonight from the Calio Hometown Community Association. And they have a presentation or update that they would like to provide to you all.
All right. Anyone from Calio Project?
Yep.
Come on, come on up, Lisa.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Dietz. I am pleased to be here tonight representing the Calio Hometown Community Association, or known as CHCA. Other members of our board are also here tonight. As you know, CHCA was formed as a nonprofit organization as part of the Calio, Cali, County's revitalization grant from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. CHCA was initiated to promote Calio and the revitalization activities during the grant period and after the grant period to provide ongoing promotion of Calio to foster business, development, and expansion, tourism, community cohesion, and appreciation of the history and culture of our village. As you may know, the original revitalization plan developed by expert consultants included a park for our community. Numerous factors did not allow for this inclusion in the program at, under the grant application. But community members, however, clearly recognized the need for a park and continued to seek land by pursuing land options in the main part of Calio. We are here tonight to officially inform the Board of Supervisors that the dream of land for a park has been realized due to the generous gift from Bobby Burgess and his family. On Monday of this week, the final papers were signed and ownership was transferred for approximately two point three acres to CHCA. We are most appreciative to the Burgess family. While some of the supervisors have been hearing a little bit about this, CHCA is excited to officially share the news with the Board of Supervisors this evening. I have shared a, a plat of where the park is going to be. Bobby Burgess is here with us tonight. Bobby, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. Bob Burgess, and of course, I've been working with the revitalization program, and I knew that they were looking for some land, and it was hard to find a good parcel in that area. And when I found out that the Williams family had their property for sale, which is back behind Shore Realty, the ABC store, and the premise bank, it's an old Calio ball field. Not to date myself, but I played Little League ball there, and I played softball, and I ran all over it when I was in the first grade. You know, that's all they, you did. They just set you up there in the, in that ball field and said, run. But anyway, when I found out that they were trying to purchase it, I had been trying to do something for the community because, as you know, we closed that business, and the community and the area had been awfully good to the Burgess family for seventy-two years. And I didn't really know what to do. But when I heard of this, I said, well, you know, if, if we could get that land, because you need the land, if you're going to build a park, you need land. I said, this is something that everyone could benefit from, young and old, people who come through, and even if, if we hopefully, if it could last for future generations for, for that benefit and enjoyment. But anyway, I did approach the Williams family, and we worked out a deal. And so finally, after a long process, and I won't get into the reasons, it's COVID and everything else, we finally got all the paperwork done, and the land now belongs to the Calio Hometown Community Association. And I, and I'm very happy and glad to do it, and I hope it all works out.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bobby. It is important to note that CHCA has always envisioned this park, not just for the Calio residents, but for the residents and visitors of this entire county. CHCA recognizes the weighty responsibility of this endeavor and has already begun efforts toward developing the park. We are in the process of determining the facilities and equipment needed, including public restrooms and parking, identifying a design contractor, and preparing a multi-phase fundraising campaign that includes local donations, public and private sector grants, and more. CHCA wants to thank you for the opportunity to share this with you all tonight, and we hope that the supervisors will support our efforts in making this park a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What Mama's got in the comments, anything?
If, for those that got little kids, grandkids, it is nothing uncommon for citizens here in Northumberland to go to the park in Warsaw. You can go down on a Sunday and you'll see three or four families or more from North umberland at the park in, in the town of Warsaw. And we've talked about economic development here in the county, and a part of economic development is things to have to do. And that park is something we need to get behind and help push. Not only a park in Calio, but we may need to consider it something here in Heesville or in another location as well, maybe one day. But that's, that's growth, and it's growth that we need. I think we need to support it.
Yep, I agree with you. Yep.
I want to thank the lady that made the presentation also, Mr. Burgess. Thank you. And this is something that we really need. We had to go to Kilmarnock to their park or somewhere else, but we have our own park pretty soon. That's good.
Yep.
I want to thank Mr. Burgess. You said the county's been good to you. You and your family have been good to the county, too. And this is a further example of this. The gateway to the northern, uh, Northumberland County, if you're coming that way, of course, I go the other end of the county. But, but again, thank you for your generosity and your efforts over the years and your family.
All right.
No, 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 not right now.
All right. Well, Mr. Burgess, that's certainly true. You have been very good to this county, and we appreciate it very much. Ms. Dietz, thank you, too, for everything. You've been very good to this county also. All right, what, what do you need from the board?
Nothing on that. I, I would just like to thank CHCA for their active participation in the Calio Revitalization Project as we've moved through that. I know Teresa Lammers worked tirelessly with, with them, and their work and relationship went both ways. So I thank you all for all y'all's hard efforts there, too.
Mr. Tadlock, are the T-21s or the, those grants, are grants available for this possibly? Like, I'm thinking of what was done up in Warsaw were grants. So I think that's something that could be looked at.
There, there are grants out there. It's something we can take a little.
Because I know was done over here with the Hewlett Tavern for a grant there, too.
Speaking of the Calio Project, I do need to get the board to move some monies. I need a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred to eighty-one oh two, eighty-nine, eighty-six for the Calio Business District Revitalization Grant.
All right.
So moved.
So moved. Jim, did you second it?
Yeah.
All right, got a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is I need to transfer funds from the Sheriff's Office Court Security Fund to the General Fund, thirty-eight thousand one hundred dollars for supplemental appropriation to thirty-one oh two, one thousand four.
So moved.
All right, got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right.
And another transfer of DCJAS grant funds for the Sheriff's Office to the General Fund in the amount of two thousand thirty-four dollars to thirty-one oh two, seven thousand four.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Another transfer for the concealed weapons permit account for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of two thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety cent to thirty-one oh two, fifty-four oh nine.
So moved.
All right. Got a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just wanted to make the board aware that we did have two proposals submitted for the water, wastewater engineering services to be on retainer, and staff was going to start the process of doing the interviews, but I wasn't sure if the board, if there was any board member that wanted to participate in those interviews with us.
Any board member want to do it?
Not yet.
All right. All right, we'll, we'll get with you on some times. Maybe we can set up those interviews.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tadlock. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the check register. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to, to look at the check register. If so, can I have a motion to approve?
So.
All right, got a motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, got a motion to second. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is board comments. All right, we'll start with Mr. Jett.
I'm just.
Can we have any comments? All right. Ms. Tom?
I have one question. While Mr. Terry was still our county attorney, so that's been awhile, we requested an Attorney General's opinion on building permits as it related. Have we gotten any kind of response back yet?
Yes, sir. I, I shared that with the, with the building, building director.
Could you send that to us?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I was just kind of wondering, but I haven't seen it on their website. I'm not saying that, I've been watching, but it, sometimes how they put things, and maybe with the transition between different Attorney Generals, though.
I'll, I'll take a look. I'll get a copy.
Okay. I was just curious, because sometimes it helps us know what we can do, but it, sometimes it spurs legislators to do some action, too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Brown?
Um, Mr. Tadlock, the white post in front of the school board office, when will they be completely painted?
I will check with Mr. Albright. I know he had started working on those. He had completed power washing those and started working on them, but I'll follow up with him.
Okay. And the only other thing I have is, I'm in full support of Mr. Haney's comment earlier, but comments being made against board members, you know, we all may agree to disagree at times, but we don't need to make personal attacks on each other. That, that type of behavior is not good.
Very true.
That's all I have.
Ms. Long?
I don't have anything at this time.
All right. I don't have.
I do have one thing, Richard.
Go, go ahead.
I'd like to, I think that we do a resolution for the Burgess, to the Burgess family for the contribution to Calio and the County of Northumberland. Did, did at our next meeting, so next month meeting, future meeting. I finished.
All right. All right, I don't have anything. All right, we'll move on to the next item. Our next item is to convene and close meeting. Mr. Tadlock, do you have the proper language for that?
Yes, sir. I need a motion by the Board of Supervisors to convene and close meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A-one, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A-three, for the discussion or consideration of a potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the potential disposition of publicly held real property for a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. And two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A-eight, for consultation with legal counsel pertaining specific legal matters where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the board's negotiating or litigating posture. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and county attorney because they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section two point two, thirty-seven, twelve, F.
So moved what you said.
All right.
Second.
I got a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we will go into closed meeting. We'll go into the next courtroom. You are welcome to stay here and wait, and we will be back as soon as possible. All right, we got a motion to second. Coming to closed meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we need a roll call vote.
Aye. Ms., Ms. Chairman, I've got a statement. Need the board to motion to return to a public meeting and certified by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening. If closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
I move what he said.
All right. Got a motion, got a second. All right.
Okay.
All right. Jimmy?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Ronnie? Michelle?
Aye.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a budget work session. We have, first item would be hazardous duty resolution. Tadlock, I'll turn it over to you.
You had public comments next, or did you want?
Public comment, pardon.
Did I skip something?
Yes.
Yeah, public comment.
I'm sorry. Let me back up. I'm sorry. Public comment. Anybody here tonight like to comment on anything? Anybody like to comment on anything?
I don't know what I would comment on.
We got anybody in, in the virtual world like to comment? Anybody in the virtual world like to comment? Many people online? Eight? Nobody wants to comment? Quiet. All right, we'll close public comment period. All right, now I get back on track. Next item is the budget work session, and that's the hazardous, hazardous duty resolution. Tadlock, I'll give that to you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, we had had a meeting earlier this week, Tuesday, and we'd gone through several potential items, reductions. We also discussed the VRS enhanced hazardous duty benefits for the EMS employees. And if that is something that the board wishes to include in the upcoming budget, we do need to move forward on the, the resolution that's in your board packet in order to give one Ms. Dotson in the office time to collect the proper information and provide that information to the, to VRS, and then they have a certain amount of information they have to do as well. So I, I don't know if the board has any specific questions or how you all would like to proceed on that.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Is the Sheriff's Office, are they covered under this, I mean, hazardous duty, previously?
Previously, yes.
Just wanted to make sure. I didn't want them to get it and y'all not.
We've had it for awhile.
I thought so. Just like to make sure, double check.
Absolutely.
And the multiplier would be one point seven?
That's correct.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we approve this enhanced duty, hazardous duty benefits using the one point seven zero multiplier.
Okay.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a question on it, full support of it. Now, look, the Sheriff's Department's already is under this, as I said, right? All right, when we went on with the Sheriff's Department, did they put that rate on everybody in the county then?
I, I believe so, yes.
Now they're going to do it again.
Yes, sir. It, it's based on the, the number of individuals and that, that rate multiplier, along with the, that changes your, your entire rate. So our rate actually would have dropped to ten, ten point one four, I believe, but now that would go up to that twelve, twelve percent.
All right, Michelle, all right.
And yes, we've, you've given us the figures that it would cost, but as you also stated last Tuesday, the fact that our joining jurisdictions have gone this for EMS, it becomes a question of recruitment and retention, and that's, we're fighting each other right now. Like, Sheriff's Office is not quite as bad, but EMS is worse. So we've got to do everything we can to keep what we've got and make it attractive for those who want to come in.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Sorry, Ms. Chairman, here's a second. Uh, Ms. Long? Thank you. All right, during the budget work session Tuesday night, there was, there were some additional questions related to the school buses, and that information was obtained and provided to the, the board members. It was also some questions related to the Sheriff's Office vehicles. That information is in your packet as well. The medic unit emergency billing funds, the board had asked what the amount currently in that, and I checked with the treasurer, and that amount is about three hundred and eighteen thousand six forty-eight. We do have the second ambulance that is just about ready, and that cost is about two hundred thirteen thousand. So we would have approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars remaining in that account.
But until the fees start coming back in, then it'll cool back up.
Now, what she, what is there for the EMS funds stated there? Is that, uh, from beginning of last year, or is that current figures? from beginning of last year or is that current figures?
That is, that is current figures. Right.
And we're bringing in, based upon average, $25,000 or so a month. Twenty to twenty-five, so.
And then there was a question on the ARPA funding. And of course, last year we received the $1,174,656. And we are waiting to receive the second round of funds of $1,174,656. Total obligations to date is approximately $1,122,399. And with that, I showed in the documentation that there's approximately $948,000 worth of projects that we're, we're looking at, which leaves approximately $278,551. So just to give you some, some figures there. One other item that we are looking at as far as, I know you all have heard a lot with the values of the cars. And I've been in discussions with the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue and trying to figure out exactly the best approach with that. One of the things that we are looking at is to reduce the percentage value. So currently we have that for the tax year, it's levy for $3.60 at 40% assessment value of the NAD, DA value. So one of the things that we are looking at is doing 35% of that value rather than the 40%. And there's some information that I need to touch base with the county attorney on at a later date. This was just a discussion that we've had the last several days and trying to work out some of the details.
And that would affect this upcoming fiscal year 2023 budget?
It, it would affect just that, the, the idea behind it would just be for next fiscal year only. And then we would reevaluate it at this time next year to see where we need to be as far as the value of the vehicles and so forth.
With a 5% reduction on the percentage, what would that mean in terms of less personal property brought in for those vehicles?
They were looking at that and I think that would bring in approximately, it may still be a little bit high, but that would bring in about what we were anticipating originally as far as the, the value. Because of the, the appreciation in the, the values of the vehicles, that, that gap there is, is what they are looking to reduce to bring in the same, about the same amount.
Have you heard of any other adjoining counties doing any action on this? I know the Richmond area has done some stuff, but have you heard anybody locally?
A lot of the localities are looking at different ways. Some are looking at this particular option. Some have looked at the personal property tax relief modifying that percentage. So they're getting creative and trying to figure out how to, to best alleviate some of the costs associated with that.
But have they done anything for the next tax year themselves, have you heard of?
Only in their budgets for fiscal year 23. Beyond that, their, the localities are just waiting and seeing what's going to happen. They were all the updates I had, Ms. Chairman. And we're bored. If you all have any additional questions or if there's anything you all would like us to research a little bit further, we, we certainly can.
All right, Ms. Tadlock. Any board members having other questions for Ms. Tadlock? Any questions for Ms. Tadlock? All right. No questions. Ms. Tadlock, you have anything else?
I, I don't, I don't know if the board would, of course, time's getting short on us as far as adoption of the budget. If you all would like to schedule another work session next week or how you all would like to proceed.
Yeah, I want another work session next week?
Whatever.
Tuesday, the 14th?
I, I can't do the 14th.
All right. What can you do, Tom?
I can do any other day but that.
All right. I can't do Monday. I can cancel my Zoom class and do it, well. You know, I can cancel Zoom class, do it on the 15th, which is Wednesday. We've got Planning Commission on the 16th.
Got a public hearing.
Got a public hearing.
I've got the PDC on the 15th too. So.
Which you got, Jim?
PDC, Planning District, uh, uh, Warsaw.
You got that on the 15th?
14th is not good.
Tommy's got something on the 14th.
16th.
16th, Planning Commission is here and they got a public hearing.
What was wrong with the?
Could we do it, could we do it early on it? On one of those days?
What was wrong with the 13th?
13th is Monday. I, I got to teach class on Monday.
Do it before your Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to say. We, we could do it before that.
Yeah.
What, on the 16th?
On 16th, is that all right for everybody?
Yep. What time?
What time y'all want?
15th?
16th.
16th Thursday?
Yeah. What time y'all want it? Five?
Five, can we go at five?
Five, good.
All right. So we'll do it on the?
16th at five.
June 16th at 5:00 PM here. Is that all right? Is that all right for you, Ms. Tadlock?
That's fine with me.
All right. All right. Anything else you have, Ms. Tadlock?
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Any board members have anything else? All right, can I have a motion to carry over?
So moved to next Thursday at 5:00 PM.
All right. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank everyone for coming tonight here in the courtroom plus everybody in the virtual world. And you're welcome to come back on June 16th at 5:00 PM.